Is everyone ready for us to start the meeting then?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, calling to order the business meeting of Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call please.
Armenta. Hale.
Here.
Hauptman.
Here.
Candela.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Bosada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Okay, please rise for the pledgeable agents and do me a favor and unmute yourself.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation.
Indivisible, but deliverable.
Thank you. Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments on agenda items this evening? And just as a reminder, please feel free to type those directly into the chat and then we will read those into the meeting. And we'll pause for a minute to allow people the opportunity to do that. Okay, I am not seeing any public comments. So we will move on to presentations.
All right, thank you. I am going to introduce Amanda Orinchak. She is from the village of Mundeline. And she is going to be presenting to the board tonight some future planning regarding the TIF district in Mundeline. So she'll present and then I know that she's going to give you an opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments that you have. So Amanda, go ahead, take it away. Would you like to share your screen or would you like Mr. Hanson, our Director of Technology, to do that for you?
Oh, I can share. Let me. Click on my screen. And then, can you see the?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so I just want to say Eric Gunther, our administrator, wanted to be present today, but unfortunately he was unable to make it as well. But hopefully I can answer whatever questions all of you may have. And I wanted to talk a little bit about our Oak Creek proposed Town Line Road TIF. I know some of you may have watched the video of the recording that has already been shared. So some of this is duplicated, but I think it's good to just kind of go over it and feel free to stop me at any time if you do have a question for me. So I have no problem kind of stopping the ship here. So the three contacts that we have at the village for the TIF are Eric Gunther, the Administrator, myself, Amanda Remchak, Director of Community Development, and Doug Kaywood. He's our finance director. And so I know some of you may be new to TIF in this district. But just to give an overview of the TIF mechanics, so everything that we do that's related to the TIF is based on the Illinois State Statute of TIF Act. There are requirements that the project must meet in order to be considered for, first of all, to be designated TIF and also to be eligible for any type of TIF funds within a designated TIF area. There are very specific requirements for eligibility. Projects that are proposed within the district have to adhere to a specific plan that's created. The initial adoption of the TIF, which can be amended over time. Generally, those projects are proposed that are already outlined within the TIF that we've created. And then the projects that the village considers by private developers have to demonstrate a financial gap. There are certain types of expenditures, there's like a list of them that the act provides for, and those are all outlined in our specific documents. But generally, when the village is talking to a developer specifically about a project, it relates to public improvement, property assembly, rehabilitation of a property and site preparation, like environmental issues and speed grading, demolition.
Amanda, I don't, I don't want to interrupt you, but we can't hear you very well.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
You're kind of muffled.
Oh, that's interesting. If I come a little closer to my screen, is that okay?
Yes, that's a lot better.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, no.
No problem.
Interrupting me on that, for sure. So I'll try to speak up a little bit too. I don't have my little ones running around me today. I'm in the office.
Thank you.
So, but in terms of the, the general, you know, policy that the village has is that whatever, whatever project is proposed has to generate the increment that goes towards paying for those eligible costs that they may have asked for. And then the TIFs, you know, they need to be, in order for them to be successful, essentially, the earlier that we can get projects to be constructed, the more successful that the TIF can be in terms of creating that end of TIF, you know, equalized assessed value. So the whole kind of purpose of it is first to get redevelopment to happen within the district, but to also, at the end of the TIF, be able to say that you have higher assessed values for all the taxing bodies involved. So that way, they haven't been stagnant and they haven't been declining, which is typically one of the eligibility requirements for designating a TIF with there. So, you know, the proposed TIF that we have includes the areas around 45 and Oak Creek. There, it's quite a large area, but there's kind of specific areas that are generally designated for different land uses within this. And so it kind of makes more sense as you look at each kind of piece in its entirety. So we have like the Oak Creek area, the Patriots Plaza area, and then the Garden Fresh area. So kind of the three sub-districts of it. And then District 76 is obviously the elementary school that's within the whole district. The, there's two high school districts, Stevenson and District 120. Two library districts, Cook and Vernon area, and then the Park District, Mundeline Park District. So, I mean, the reason, I'll just summarize this quickly. I mean, the reason we chose this area is, you know, there's been a decline in commercial viability. That's been a trend over the last several years, ever since the recession, you know, it's really taken its toll with both movement of the, the commercial to the east, to the, towards the malls, towards the tollways. Lots of competition out there. Obviously, this pandemic hasn't been helping with that and it's kind of sped things along in terms of the decline of the commercial. And then, you know, just having those areas kind of be repurposed for commercial, we're not seeing a lot of interest from commercial developers. And I know Walmart is definitely one that had come up a couple of years ago and they worked to try to redevelop the Oak Creek Plaza Shopping Center. That was before they decided that they were going to stop doing kind of these large mega centers. And now they've kind of pulled back on their size of store and they went through a whole litany of issues with the previous property owner. And then the property went into foreclosure and they backed away from the project completely. So they haven't talked to us in probably three to, three to four years on that site. We reached out after it went to Privant and there wasn't any interest in them coming back to the site. And we've shopped it to a bunch of other retailers and groups for redevelopment. And we get kind of proposals for what they call like value add commercial, but it's like storage centers and things like that. So we haven't really had any viable, like, great retailers. Like I think if you, the thing that comes to mind that people want really is what, you know, Melody Farm probably has created. And that's just not something that is going to come to this location because they are wanting to be closer to the highway and to the mall and that redevelopment project that's going on there. So we did, in these different areas, look at this with Urban Land Institute Chicago a couple of years ago. They proposed that the TIF district was a recommendation of theirs to help with offsetting the cost of the redevelopment. Because typically, commercial and industrial users are residential, for that matter, are looking for kind of greenfield sites that are cheaper to develop. And then they recommended for like Oak Creek. They said this was probably the only area that really they could see a residential development going in it. But they could have, they, they said it was open to a bunch of possibilities, frankly. And it was really a matter of timing and that's something that the village doesn't really have control over ultimately because the property is privately owned. And so the private owner has been dealing with a developer recently who has indicated that they're interested, but the project only works if it has the TIF district in place. And then, moving along on that, so we do have a proposal for the Oak Creek in terms of a concept. They are proposing townhouses and single family. We did generate, run the Naperville model to see what kind of children would be generated out of their proposal. And it looked like there were 63 students that would be attributed to 76 and 14 students to District 125. And then the, the model shows like just shy of 500 residents. So obviously that depends on a whole lot of things. Who buys them, who rents them, et cetera, whatever they end up being. But we'll see how that kind of shakes out over time. But we have been seeing that the townhouses are not generating a significant number of children. Just generally speaking, but the single family would generate probably a few more. And then we move to the Garden Fresh area. And the Garden Fresh area is what we think might be best for an industrial redevelopment. The area is a little bit quirky for industrial users because of the access. And so that's something that the TIF would, we would hope to utilize some of the funds to maybe offset some like traffic improvements. For instance, there's a light, pardon me, for where the Jewel Osko is located. That may shift north or probably north a little bit and maybe be reworked to provide better access for trucks. And we've already had some initial conversations, probably a year or so ago, with the storage facility to see if maybe they'd be willing to have like a shared access. But I will say that the village does not intend to go through and have everything here redeveloped. You know, I know everybody likes Greg's Custard and we don't want to see a beloved business go away. So, so that's not something that we would plan for. But the money that is generated from the redevelopment in the TIF could be used towards improvements along those corridors like streetscaping and stormwater and sidewalks, things like that. But this area, we largely would see as industrial. We need the industrial in the village. We're actually very low in terms of our availability. And we lose, businesses that want to expand here or locate here can't do so because we don't have spaces large enough for them. So we're about 4% vacancy right now. And then in terms of residential and people, you know, we're saying NA because we don't anticipate that being developed in terms of residential use. And then Patriots Plaza is probably one of the last areas to be redeveloped, I would say. That would probably be largely dependent on what goes on, what type of businesses may locate to the north at the Garden Fresh and, you know, the residential success, if, you know, that comes to fruition to the east. This would either be smaller industrial units that maybe cater to, you know, smaller users or like startups. It also could be something that maybe is a commercial use that services, you know, like a, let's say a drive-through. You know, maybe it's a Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks or whatever that could cater to the traffic and the businesses and the residents that are in the area. The only residential that I could maybe see happening is if it was a mixed-use building with like apartments on top and retail at the bottom, pardon me. But those are, that's a challenging type of development to finance and you're not seeing a lot of push for that in terms of development world. So the easy play is if somebody like a gas station community or retail or whatever, redevelop the site and use it in that capacity. And so I put NA or TBD just in case there was that chance of apartments. And you never know, it could be like senior apartments and that obviously would not generate children, but just be on the same side. We did put a TBD, but again, I don't anticipate that likely coming online until way far into the future and probably more likely being like a commercial user. So we had, on February 10th, we hosted the Joint Review Board. And then there is on April 12th, a public hearing that will be hosted at a village board meeting. And then if that, the board decides to move forward with the creation of it, then we anticipate that being on April 26th. So that's kind of the timeframe. I do have kind of mockups of the different use types or they're just things that staff created with the exception of I did put in the most recent plan for the Oak Creek Plaza in a couple of slides after this. And then there is, if there's information that you want to ask about any of our existing TIFs, I'd be happy to answer that. And then just a quick, in case anybody is interested, this is the proposal we have for the Oak Creek. We did have a concept presentation to the board by, this is from D.R. Horton. This is not, you know, this hasn't gone through the public process in terms of public hearings, but this is what we've been working on with them, with the townhouses. And then these are the single families that are shown here. And so these are, you know, for discussion purposes, like I said, they're not finalized yet. They are going through reviews through staff. But I wanted to showcase what, what they, that, what we have been talking about with them. And there's still more, like we would want to talk to them about enhancing the landscaping here. You know, what more specifically would be done with this creek area on the west? So those are all things that we would discuss with them. And this creek treatment and what would happen here is something that would be eligible under the TIF incentives. So, and then for industrial spaces, you know, we're not industrial builders. So, you know, they know their needs better than we do, but we wanted to show kind of multiple scenarios of buildings. You could keep Garden Fresh there. You wouldn't have to get rid of it. Same thing with this scenario. You could keep the Garden Fresh on the east side and then redevelop some of these other parcels. You could put commercial outlots. We're not planning to get rid of the Chase Bank or the McDonald's, but just to showcase kind of what you could do with that and leave that kind of open for discussion with potential developers. And then in terms of the Patriots Plaza, this kind of shows the, you know, what, what a residential business with commercial could look like. Again, you know, they would cater to whatever needs they find in the market at that time. But just opportunities of what you see there today versus the future. So. So that's what I have, with the exception of I did add some information on the current TIFs, just in case anybody had other.
Yeah, Amanda, I just wanted to ask, when do you think a reasonable timeline is to figure out what this type of development may look like? Like for instance, the, that residential, potential residential area in Patriots Plaza?
Yeah, so the timeline for that is very developer-specific. You know, I think with the downtown and here, we had, we adopted the, typically you adopt when you kind of think that there's some interest from the developer because the TIF really doesn't do you any good to just be sitting there and not be generating increments. And you don't have a developer that's interested. It's, it's basically kind of lost years on a TIF. And then the further out you go on, on the TIF timeline, the less productive it is. And I guess I will get a little bit into that. You know, it, it really just depends on, on what you're looking at. And so for the downtown, we have, you know, development that started in 2005. And when that building came online, you can see that there was a bump in the EAVs for the original TIF district. But then, you know, the recession hit and things kind of stayed stagnant. And then a lot of, of the buildings, particularly Cardinal Square, you know, they were condos at first and those took a big hit on their sales and EAVs over time. And people, you know, arguing for reducing their taxes. So that's where you kind of see kind of the decline happening there. And then, you know, we kind of broke them out into TIF 1 and TIF 2 in 2016. But you started at this kind of eight million bar. And if nothing is happening, it's just going to stay stagnant. And there really wasn't a lot happening over the last couple of years. But we're hoping with the next couple of projects that it starts to, you know, go up in value by the time TIF 1 expires, which is in 2028. So these are really the Cardinal Square buildings. And then there's one other project that we're hoping will come online in TIF 1 by the time it expires. But if that, those projects don't come to fruition, then really like, you know, the base, the EAV for TIF 1 could stay, you know, at about this much. But if it, TIF 2, we're thinking, this is, there's a couple of projects that we're currently talking about now and those will bring the, the EAV for both the TIFs up to about 38 million, almost 40 million. And what happens is, you know, you tax that like one-third the value and then you have to pay down what you obligated to the developers, what you've obligated for the public improvement projects and, you know, what obligations are to the different districts. And so that's really the amount of money that's left to fund the, the projects that you outlined in your plan. And so some of those are taken on by the developer and some of those are taken on by the village. But the village can't spend like this amount of money, you know, and it's not 40 million. It's, you know, a third of that that's available for the projects. And that can only be spent on projects that you outlined in the budget and in your TIF plan. So, sorry, I kind of put aside there, but I didn't, I thought it might be helpful just to know where the money goes and how we anticipate it coming in. But right now, this is basically where we're at and where we started. And we lost a bunch of years on the TIF for the downtown. And so we're hoping that with, with the TIF on Town Line Road, that we do have some interested parties today, that we can get them going, get the increment started so that at the end of that TIF life, that you, every taxing body will see that benefit. So that's kind of the goal, because this is what we say, the butt four clauses. If it doesn't, if the development doesn't happen, this is where your EAV could stick. So.
Amanda, thanks for the presentation. Couple of questions for you. The, the TIF funds, as I'll call them, ones, in this case, the city of Mundeline will, will manage those. Will they be reserved to enhance that particular project? Or does the village use that for other areas within the city?
So we cannot use those funds for other areas of the village. They have to be spent in that district and they have to go towards very specific items that are outlined in the TIF Act. So those, those are the public improvements, land acquisition. You know, if there are utilities that need to be upsized or re, you know, redone, those are the things. There's, you know, frankly, there's $90 million worth of projects in that area that could be done. That's not going, you know, we're not going to obviously be able to do $90 million of projects. So.
So if we call this the Oak Creek, Oak Creek TIF, those dollars can only be used for Oak Creek TIF or Oak Creek enhancements?
That's correct. They can only be used in that corridor.
Okay. Next, you talked about the property owner. How many property owners are we talking about for this, for Oak Creek?
Oh, so, so Oak Creek itself has, basically everything you see outlined here is owned by, what was the, like, mortgager to the previous owner. So they, they foreclosed upon it and took it back. So that was Privant Financial. And they are now in discussions with other people. There are people that own these outlots. These outlots are, you know, not being proposed for redevelopment. So they're really just dealing with one owner that owned all of these people here.
Okay. And then the, do you, how far, how much of a commitment do you need from businesses? Including, by the way, the, the developer, how, how serious of a commitment do they have to? We'll start with the developer. I'm sure that, that person, that team has to be the most serious committed to the project. And then I want to ask you the same thing about any, you know, the potentially developments for other smaller businesses that come into Oak Creek. So let's start with the, with the developer first.
Yeah, so is this just before we get into like agreements or is this like before we enact a new TIF?
Let's do both.
Okay. So, so in terms of the businesses, we don't have to have, like, so anybody that owns the property here, we don't have to have their approval to enact a TIF. They don't have to agree to it. Essentially speaking, their tax dollars, the amount that they're taxed doesn't change. So the existing businesses themselves, it doesn't change. So whatever the assessor's office determines of the, you know, base value of what they're going to be taxed, whether there's a TIF district that's applied to this or not, they get taxed the same amount. What changes is if there is a, you know, reassessment of values within township, you know, and that's going at the township level, then those tax dollars can go up or they can go down. So if you don't have activity in the TIF, those tax dollars can continue to go down if they have been trending downward. And so they'll just get adjusted as they work, but there's still like a base line that is set for the increment. So if, if we do nothing and all the value just continues to go down, everybody's tax bill goes down and the village doesn't collect any dollars to use for the product in this area. If there is redevelopment in the area or there's reassessments for added value to the taxes, then that's where we capture, but it is everything, so it basically it's frozen at the value that you've set when you get the district in place. So it will go up if there's redevelopment for a project that's of higher value. So when you tear something down, you'll lose the value. And then when you build something in its place, you hope to gain the value. In terms of the developer, so with this TIF, we did not want to start thinking about pulling the trigger on a TIF district, even though it was the recommendation of the Urban Land Institute, until we had a commitment that a developer had, had one of these properties in this area under contract. Doesn't mean that they won't go through with the project, but we at least thought that there would be a possibility that there would be some viability. So that being said, they could turn, you know, change their minds and pull out of the project and we would have enacted a TIF district that, you know, we're hoping to get somebody else interested in. But you have to kind of have that interest first and we needed to see that commitment that they were willing to move forward with their due diligence period before we wanted to even move forward. Because again, you don't want to have lost years because it's just, it doesn't do anybody any good for the end. So.
So basically, there's no contractual agreement or a set amount of time in the, in the infancy of the project, right?
Correct. Yeah. So we don't have an active agreement with anybody in this area right now. So the developer itself is, you know, looking into the projects and the pro forma. And, and so when they actually do decide to continue to move forward, we ask them to give us like all of their financial information and we return so that we can evaluate those. And we'll consider whether they can ask for eligible costs, which for a developer is only things like acquisition and demolition, site preparation. They can't use it to build like their walls of their buildings or anything like that. And so we will look at that and make sure that, that whatever they're asking has to be above like a normal range of return for, you know, if they're asking for something way out of line and we don't do this to enrich the boat. So it's to make the area better. That's the whole goal of this, you know, the TIF district.
Thanks so much.
Could you go back?
Excuse me. Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Okay, could you go back to the slide on the existing TIFs?
Yeah.
And for those, okay, District 76, do they fall in TIF 1?
TIF 1, um, yeah. So there is a portion of Cardinal Square that is in TIF 1.
Are we in TIF 2 as well?
There is also, yes, there's also a portion in TIF 2. Correct.
Okay. And, okay, so those roll off by 2039. Can you tell me, like, I, I can see the projected EAV value increase, but do you have, how the EAV value is, like, can you give us the actual numbers? I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time reading your graph. How the E A V value is, like, can you give us the actual numbers? I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time reading your graph.
Sure, um, so the projected E A V at the end of twenty twenty eight. You know, when that TIF one expires, we anticipate it with the current project that we have. To be around thirty seven, I want to say thirty seven, thirty eight million. I have these numbers somewhere like more specifically in the table, but um, then the. TIF two, which will expire, so the, so these are the individual TIFs.
Right.
One and TIF two, when they broke off, this is just the at them adding together.
Sure.
And so the twenty thirty nine, when the TIFs downtown are anticipated to expire. The projected E A V is around forty four million. It started at around um. Like eight million was the beginning of what they started at. And so, right now, though, they're not, you know, they're still like pondering down close to each one. Um, you know, fourteen million, uh, twelve million, somewhere around there. Um, the, they're, because they haven't had a lot of development. We're actually expecting some newer projects to come online that are uh, valued. Much greater than, you know, some of the activities that we've had recently. So. But that being said, you know, we, when they first come online, it takes a couple of years for them to actually, you know, get built. And then get the E A V online to stabilize until it'll, it'll take a little bit of time for those projects to actually get to the E A V that they're projected at.
Sure, and that, that E A V, the projected E A V increase, is that determined by contracts you already have in place and projects that are already? You know, there's a firm commitment to?
Um, there's, so some of them are a little bit speculative and and could fall through. Um, but I will say that, so the TIF one is is really the, the Cardinal Square project. That we have, uh, two buildings are proposed, and those are probably the last two buildings that we anticipate in that TIF. Um, in the next couple of years. And then the other project that's adding to that E A V is the Old Bill Hall redevelopment. And so those three projects, we anticipate kind of bringing up the the E A V in that area. Just based on the experience we've had with the first two buildings that were constructed. Um, and then uh, TIF two, this is um, the project uh, Spring Bank. Where the, the Cortland near, you know, Fairhaven um, school. That is uh, that project, we do have commitments and agreements and we do have active developer interest. And so those are being accounted into this E A V production. Um, you know, we hope that everything that was approved in the agreement this past April gets built. Cause there's apartment units and um, townhouses that are approved for those. And if those all happen, then yes, we do anticipate seeing this go up. And that doesn't account for any other activity. So we actually have a prod, a couple of other projects that are being proposed for downtown. And if those happen, um, and those would be in TIF two, those should increase even more. So.
Okay, when you originally, when the, those two TIFs are, are the original TIF um, was proposed. How, what was your anticipated um, future E A V at that time? Is this in line with what you guys thought? Is it lower? Is it higher?
It's lower, um, it's lower. And, you know, so when the, this, when those TIFs were adopted. I I would should say it's lower for the original TIF, so before the two were broken off. These are more in line with what we are, we're projecting when we adopted with one and fifty separately. So that they're pretty even for what we've been expecting. Um, TIF, the original TIF for downtown was done in two thousand and four. There were um, you know, just development was going kind of bonkers. And uh, there were, that 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 anticipated having all of Cardinal Square built up. It anticipated like ten story buildings for downtown in the line, which is not gonna happen. Um, you know, it's just, it it was a different timeframe and reality than what we face today. And so these have been adjusted for uh, the more um, kind of moderate development plan.
And for the, okay, so for the um, the Oak Creek Plaza potential TIF. Do you have um, kind of like a graph or information that will show us how the E A V values have been trending for those properties? And then what you're projecting if the TIF comes into play and if those um, projects are developed, what the E A Vs would be?
Yeah, so we, so they're not included in, so there, there's a couple part answers to that. So the, the TIF uh, eligibility report shows what the last, you know, five. We, I think we included six years of E A Vs have been, and they've been, um, so the, the requirement is they have to be either. You know, trending down, decreasing, or stagnant as compared to the um, or lagging, it was the term. They have to lag the whole village in terms of its growth and E A V, or they have to be trending down. Um, and so the, all the areas um, have met that, you know, we we kind of had started with a smaller area. That area met, you know, individually, and then we added more area and those areas still continue to be declining or lagging. Um, or at least uh, it has to be uh, three of the last five years and and there's greater lag in that area. As compared to that, but um, the, we did do projections based on those um, concepts. That I showed you guys, the uh, having it built as industrial, having it built out with the um, Oak Creek project. And then what if it were built with either like an industrial or an Oak Creek or not industrial or a mixed use project? And um, the, the total projected E A V was run to consider. So actually, the, I I should back up and say the residential actually get, got more uh, value in terms of its E A V. Than the industrial did, but the industrial doesn't utilize the services, you know, doesn't have the service demand that the residential will have. Um, but industrial land, if it's warehousing, just isn't valued as as highly as as the other one is. Um, but in terms of uh, overall E A V, it it, I think our consultants projected it out to forty to fifty. Um, million in terms of E A V, and I think it's at sixteen right now. So it's in the, but it is outlined in TIF uh, reports and plans that we have posted online, those specific numbers.
So are you, okay, so you're saying the report is online at the Mundeline website?
Yes, so you can access that, yeah, from our website, um, and I can email it to everybody as well after this. But it's, it starts around six, I want to say sixteen million and it's projected to be around forty or fifty million, um, if everything develops out. You know, and that's just the case, like you can't predict like another recession or, you know, a decline in industrial or, you know, those types of things. So we, you know, can only go with what we anticipate today, but it's a twenty three year timeframe. So um, sometimes those have to be adjusted for reality.
Have they been adjusted for potential impact from COVID?
Um, so I will say we started the, you know, looking at all this with COVID in mind and thinking about that. Um, and there still is a really strong presence in terms of the industrial markets. Um, we still have some commercial people that are looking um, for just the right opportunity. But that's why I said Patriots Plaza would be like a last to develop type thing. And then um, we've still been actively engaged with the developer for Oak Creek. And they still seem highly interested and continuing the, looking at that project, so. Um, so, so far, things seem to be, you know, still moving along. And uh, I will say the residential market right now is uh, really strong in Mundeline. Um, there's not really a lot of inventory, so they actually need more inventory online. So.
Thank you. And those are the only two TIFs that currently exist, right? TIF one and TIF two?
Yeah, and so there was a TIF a long time ago, it was actually a business district. And um, I think it was over where the jewel was uh, on forty five. And that was TIF one technically, and then the downtown TIFs are actually TIF two and TIF three. But since they're the only ones existing, we call them uh, you know, one and two. So when we created this uh, proposed TIF for Townline, we call it TIF four, because technically it's TIF four. So um, that's a little bit confusing and I know we hasn't asked that.
Okay, thank you. Eric, I have some questions for you, but I'll just ask them at the end.
I just had a real quick question about uh, where did the estimates on number of kids that we estimate for. D seventy six come from? Uh, I I think you mentioned it and you might have mentioned Naperville, but um, can you go over that again, please?
Yeah, so I just plugged in the uh, the unit factors that are used in the Naperville model. Uh, for number of kids generated, you know, for the type of uh, unit that it is and number of bedrooms for the units. Um, and so there, there's like this calculation that, you know, breaks it down like there is point, whatever number of kids. Per unit in a three bedroom house, and you put in the number of units that you have. And then it generates the, the anticipated number of kids that are coming out of that subdivision.
But is that a sort of generally accepted development?
Yeah, so the Naperville model has been used by districts for decades, um, you know, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Amanda, the Oak Creek property, only one that has a developer. Who's actively um, in talks to creative element. And then the other two, the Garden Fresh property and the Patriot Plaza property. Um, there's no active. Talks with the developer in 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 those two places, if I'm understanding that correctly?
That's correct. I would say, you know, I, knowing that we're in the process of trying to create a district. I have reached out to developers advising that we're considering creating one. Because that would entice somebody to look at it, and we have had interested people talking to us. But we don't have anything that's, you know, hey, I have the property under contract and then, you know, wanting to move forward. But it does make it more uh, appealing to a developer to know that they may have these incentives.
Oh, and so the main incentive to them, once the TIF is in place, would, it would be what? Help me understand like how that incentivizes, we don't have somebody who's actively interested.
So the incentive for them is that, let's say that you have a um, a develop. So normally they would go to a greenfield, right? So if you have an industrial developer that wants to develop something. One of their primary locations that they look for is something easy to develop that has utilities. So they don't really want to go to an area that they have to acquire where there's existing buildings and they have to do demolition and things like that. So the TIF dollars can go towards paying down some of those extra costs like demolition and acquisition costs. Because those lands are gonna be a little bit more expensive and they're also gonna have those extra costs. But there may be environmental remediation, but the way that we structure our deals with uh, the developers is that. They basically have to front the cost and then they only get paid back through dollars they generate from their project. So if they don't end up building or they don't build for, you know, five years. And ends up they have, are out less money because they didn't build sooner. Um, that basically it's just lost money to them. And that actually happened with Cardinal Square. So they did the road improvements and they did storm, like regional stormwater facilities. They did a bunch of demolition and inquisition, and they frankly are not barely going to touch the principal on all those. So they, they fronted it and they're getting paid a lot of interest for their project, but not a lot of principal on it. So. Look, I got a follow up question.
I I do, but I think I know the answer. Um, um, is that what I'm? So what's the incentive then for, cause you said there's, there's multiple owners in, in both the Garden Fresh Plaza. And the Patriot Plaza, are there multiple owners there?
Um, Patriots Plaza, so the general area of Patriots Plaza does have multiple owners. And then the Garden Fresh does also have, there's one primary owner that owns like kind of the bookends and there's like a different owner in the middle. Um, and so kind of what's the incentive for them? Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so really, it's not, it's not as much of an incentive for the uh, the existing owners. Unless they want to sell and they, they kind of want to be out of the property today. But there are, you can have rehab dollars, which we don't get a lot of proposals for. But if somebody wanted to reutilize their site, say repurpose it for something, they could actually propose something. And and we would do a deal where we would provide them the increment from their project if they were to repurpose their, their buildings for something. So that's, that, that's like the one incentive that they have, or if they wanted to take on environmental remediation or something of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions. Um, I was wondering, like, how does this like impact our school district specifically? Like, um, with these new students coming in, obviously there'll be additional costs to our school district. How are those calculated?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. So per the TIF Act, um. All the schools and the libraries get dollars for every student generated. Um, so like with the TIF that we have in place um, in downtown, because most of the students are generated for seventy five. They get annual dollars for the number of students that are attending the school. Um, in terms of the developments that are happening, we do as a village typically collect um, impact fees. For um, the school districts, so if they're for residential projects. So for instance, the townhouses that are uh, being proposed in the single family for Oak Creek. We would um, provide their, there's typically every school district has a list of their proposed, they call it donations, developer donations. Um, and that is outlined on a per unit basis and they have to pay those uh, when they develop their project. Um, so those get paid to the school districts. Um, and then if there are, for instance, capital projects that you have outlined that are of need. Um, I would uh, work with, you know, staff at the Village Hall and make sure that we know about those. Cause we can also include those things as eligible items within um, the, the TIF. Uh, revenue generated, so we can make sure that that gets allocated. Also, if there is a redevelopment agreement with a developer, where we think that there's, you know, an undue burden on the school districts. We could see if there's other things that might also be able to be worked out. So i- it's just understanding what those needs are and you don't always have that, you know, view into your world. So.
Yeah, um, cause my concern is that like using a generic model like the Naperville model. Might not take into consideration the demand that like Stevenson might have, like the draw that that might have. So we might end up with more students than we are anticipating. Um, so I guess my question is probably more for um, for our district um, team. But like, how many students can we accommodate at our school? At what point in time does it become um, a problem, I guess?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, you know, currently we're at about, I think, eight hundred and eighty three students in our districts. Our enrollment has dropped, you know, a good amount of the last few years. It's, you know, a couple of different factors, whether it's. Students unenrolling temporarily because of the pandemic or whatever that case might be. But, you know, with those numbers, we're just floating around eighteen uh, for average class size. So we're still pretty uh, pretty well situated for all of our classrooms. So these additional projected uh, sixty three students would just bump us up to about twenty. So it'd be about a student, student, a student and a half or two at most that would impact our average class sizes. So that's not really a, a concern from our end. I think the only concern we'd have to have is if the numbers were higher than that. We may have to have a conversation regarding, you know, our, our current rental agreements and stuff that we have in place. And whether for future spaces needed, but at this time, we were able to accommodate sixty three or so other students.
Okay.
It is a good point about the Stevenson uh, factor though, because we, we do use a, um, in the past, a fairly standard template. And we use the Naperville model. Freeze. Sorry, I said in the past, we've used a standard template for the impact agreements, the, the developer contributions. And yeah, it is just, um, we, we take our um, average per capita tuition cost. And it gets calculated based on the, the units itself. So they use the Naperville model, how many students they anticipate generating. And we have a factor that goes into that. So we, you know, we'll get some lump sum amounts, but it is a more valuable territory. If there's students are moving into Stevenson, we may, we may see a slightly higher count. So, you know, I meant to work with Amanda on that one to see uh, you know, what options we have with working with the developer.
Okay, great. Um, and then Amanda, you had mentioned that industrial. Um, ends up having like a lower E A V. So would that, um, like Patriots Plaza? Um, ends up having like a lower EAV, so would that um, like Patriots Plaza, like would you? Be more inclined to pursue like a residential developers?
I think our need for the uh, for the space for industrial to provide an employment base in the village. Is something that is, is certainly driving us to want it to be industrial, so no, we don't really want to go. Um, towards a residential uh development there, it's also. I, I, I can explain it in terms of how I visualize it in my mind and I don't see that as a residential development area, you know? It's just hard to picture it, whereas, you know, Oak Creek with at least the creek and then the uh new development of that thrive uh facility that took over for um Winchester House. Kind of make it that more of a natural, you know, conversion over to a residential versus, you know, the area that's kind of between kind of. You know, what I would say of that Patriots Plaza and the major highways and the railroad tracks, just it seems a little quirky to put residential there, so.
So is there like um, a maximum like, so, okay, so. We freeze our taxes right where they are, that's our tax base is frozen, is there like a maximum amount that the TIF is able to draw? Or is there like a maximum amount like that we could potentially like, like our district could lose out on? Does that make any sense?
I thi- so I think what you're saying is, so we do outline in the budget the projects that we would pay for. Um. It's not anticipated, uh, and it's likely because a lot of these areas are termed blighted or areas of need or things like that. Um, I mean, they generally take a lot of money to make them like. Kind of become what you've outlined in your plan, um, but if you were to hit the budgeted amount that's in the plan. Then you could essentially retire the TIF early, so i- if that uh makes sense. Um. You know, I would say that, that there's definitely, what we've seen is that the amount of growth that we've had in these two TIPS here. It seems unlikely that we would be able to retire that TIF early just because of like with especially industrial not generating as much. Um, that I don't think that it would hit those numbers. Um, and you'd probably need like every dollar amount frankly to incentivize the development to happen there, but. Uh, that being said, if it did happen, like we would obviously be willing to, to do that and. You can only do what's outlined in your plan and you can only um, you know, approve those things and, and adjust your budget with the approval of the JRB. So the, the joint review board of the taxing bodies.
Um, and then just one other kind of general question, like, so you had said, um, so we, we freeze the tax base. And then what happens if a developer doesn't come in and say the EAV decreases? Who pays the difference?
So if your tax bill decreases and that, those revenues to the taxing bodies decrease. You know, though that decreases and uh as normal as any other tax year it would. It's only if it goes above that levy dollar amount. By the taxing districts that, that increment is captured, but if they go down, nobody pays anybody anything, it's just, it goes down for everybody.
Okay. All right, Nicole, yeah, right now, thank you.
Amanda, just one more question. Um, you said that there's a public hearing on April twelfth.
Yeah.
Um, up to this point, what has been the community um response to another TIF uh district creation from some of your other stakeholders?
So the other stakeholders that we've heard from, um, you know, I, I did a similar presentation with questions and answers for Cook Board. Um, Cook Library Board and they were very receptive and, and saw a need for the redevelopment. Um, from the general public, I actually haven't received, I received one interested party like registration, but they haven't, no, nobody else has made any public comments to me. About how they feel about it. Um, District one twenty-five, they were supportive of it. I, I will say all the, the JRB taxing bodies were supportive. The probably uh most concerned of all of the taxing bodies was, I will say, the Park District. And so that didn't really have to do as much with the TIF. But more just thinking about additional residential, which would likely be the draw regardless of whether the TIF was in place or not, to be honest. Um, and so the, you know, they were concerned about that, you know, they having residential bodies added to their district and providing for those. And then, um, you know, that's something, like I said, it's easier to deal a lot of times with that in a development agreement when we get those developers in, so we can make sure that we. Um, accommodate for if there are facility needs or future needs and we're also restricted by, you know, the state statutes and what we can and cannot, you know. Ask for from these developers, it's not a open checkbook uh by any means, but it has to be attributable to the impact that development is bringing in and so. Um, so that was their concern was the residential for Oak Creek in particular, and they were concerned that maybe we would change. Whether residential was proposed on that piece uh where the Garden Fresh is and I will say that all these areas are currently zoned. Commercial, in order to be residential, they all have to go through a public hearing rezoning process, which would be separate from this TIF process. Um, and there's at this point, no interest in having industrial, I mean, having residential where that industrial area is because we really, really need that industrial. So that's what we'll be pushing for.
Eric, I had um two questions for you and. I know this is kind of putting you on the spot, so you might not have this information in front of you, which is, is fine if you want to follow up, but. Do you know what the impact the two existing TIPS have had on the district in terms of revenue? Do you know what our lost revenue has been?
Yeah, I don't have that. I haven't uh looked into that in a little bit, we, I've explored it last year, so let me go dig up my notes and I'll uh respond back to.
Sure.
Reply all with everybody.
Sure, yeah, and then as a follow up. In, then in looking at, you know, because this would be the third TIF that impacts our district, so essentially kind of free, it, it essentially freezes. Virtually all of kind of the industry, I think, mo- the, the most of the industry that falls in, under District Seventy-Six. Um, so can you also let us know, you know, how, what do you think the impact this TIF district would have on our revenue? And is there anything that the district can do to potentially recoup that revenue um to compensate for uh losing it to the TIF?
All right, I will work on a statement this week and uh send it out to the board.
Thank you very much.
No problem. And Amanda, I may just have some follow up questions for you, you can help out with, so I'll, I'll touch base with you, thank you.
And Eric, um, for you, if I could follow up on what Joy's uh asking. As you look into that, I, I guess my question would be. What's like the long play here for the district is um, you know, of course it depends on what actually happens on those properties. And how, you know, how much industry or residential comes in and. What the final outcome in is in the raising of the um equalized assessed values. Um, yeah, I, I would, I don't, not even sure what question I'm asking here, basically. Does, does this pay off in the end for the district if? You know, i- i- if those properties remain on the trajectory that they're at with stagnant or decreasing. Equalized assessed values. Is it worth it in the long run, if it's a short time, for uh, you know, short term loss but a long term gain, is that, what, 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 what's the? The history and the evidence um tell us about how these play out over time, I guess that's my question.
Sure, and I, I think that does roll at least a little bit into the first question Joey asked of how those first two tips have impacted the district. You know, and talking to Amanda, uh, you know, throughout this process, they've been very transparent and open with. Requesting information from Bob and I, we've done some community forums, talked to their developers and everything like that. And, you know, you can easily see it just driving by that area, it's been pretty stagnant over the last couple of years, so. You know, at least the way I viewed it was, you know, kind of a rising tide with all ships here and. Well, will help us out down the line, especially if we're able to get some commercial and industrial property, I think that'd be a big benefit to everybody and, and it sounds like that's one of the biggest uh. Goals of, of Bill Zemunda line here, so I'll look into that and, and see if I tie that into the first question Joey asked, because you know, in the end, it's a long way down the road to look with twenty-three years. Uh, you know, the length of this TIF here, but um. What will that area look like in twenty-three years without it? It's kind of what I'm more worried about too.
Yeah, I guess, and to make it a little easier to think about, so, you know, it. Basically, what you say, without the TIF, you have to imagine that either. Minimal redevelopment happens or uh no redevelopment happens, uh, it's probably a more of the minimal redevelopment happens like the. Let's just say across the street, Panera taking over where Pizza Hut is, so that's basically kind of the, you know, minimal redevelopment that you might see happening within the corridor without the TIF. Um, it's a little bit easier to look at, what am I missing if you look at something like where Melody Farms is? Because that is, was nothing and then was developed into something, so that's definitely like the loss of. Like any additional revenue, like you, at least there, you have a starting place here of what it is and what it could continue to be. And frankly, there's buildings like the old Waterbed Place uh just on East Forty-Five across from Royal Cantonese that has been vacant for, I've been here fifteen years almost. And it's been vacant since I started working here and I can imagine that. It could still be vacant in another ten years, it just, that's, that's what's happened with some of these places. Um, and I don't want to see that in this corridor, um, and so that's kind of where we're hoping this. Uh, tool is used to enhance that area and bring benefit to everybody once you get down the line.
Yeah, that's my totally knowledgeable opinion, but at least looking at some of those areas, you can see the jewel. Uh, little complex over there is, you know, at least a newer area, you go to Patriots Plaza and the area where Garden Fresh is. I can't imagine anybody else being able to redevelop that without tearing that whole kind of structure down, the whole strip mall areas both look like they're totally antiquated and. You know, especially, you know, where the Menards Building used to be and things like that, so I could imagine a substantial investment's going to be needed to. Flip that.
Yeah, so, well, thank you for letting me talk to all of you tonight and uh provide a lot of information and. I will say I'm not the finance director and, you know, I'm not our TIF consultant, so hopefully I provided some good answers, but if you have anything further. That I can reach out to one of them about, do not hesitate to send it to me, so.
Amanda, I know you had mentioned um that this presentation or the information is on your website, is there a way that you can just share it, the presentation with me and then I can board it onto the board, so if they want to look at those graphs a little closer, they can?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, and I will say, though, these, the graphs I shared with you today, like on this PowerPoint was something that we made for our village trustees. To talk about our TIF one and two, so those graphs are not in the public realm, um, obviously they are because I presented them to you tonight, but um in terms of. The uh, the numbers that you're asking for in our TIF budget, those are in the uh into, in that plan and, and eligibility report, so absolutely.
Okay, and then one last question, um, what are next steps? I know you said that you've got, your next meeting is on April twelfth, I believe was the date, what is our board um expected to do? Prior to that date or after that date as far as to pass a resolution or to take any type of action to support or not support?
Yeah. So I will say, you're not required to do anything at this point, but if the, if District Seventy-Six wants to take a stand in one way, shape or form and provide that to the village. Uh, I, you know, you can certainly uh draft a letter or do a resolution and provide it to us and I would do it by that April twelfth date. And then um we will present that to our board while they're making their consideration um for, you know, during the public hearing process. So um that, that way, you know, you guys can be heard for how we feel about the TIF in general, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, I'm, I'll pop up and let you guys do the rest of what you need to do tonight, so.
I think we're good, thank you so much, Amanda.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And that is all for presentations for this evening.
Okay. Then we will move on um to our business agenda and we have a couple items for action this evening. Um, the first item for action is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Items under the Omnibus Vote Agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items. That item or items will be pulled from the Omnibus Vote Agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the Omnibus Vote Agenda items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Lozada.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Armenta, Hale.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Kwan, yes. Sullivan.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to um the second item, which is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have um two new hires and one employee that's included just for informational purposes, uh, may I have a motion to approve, please?
Moved.
Second. Second.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Armenta, Hale.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Kwan, yes, Lozada.
Yes.
Okay, uh, moving on to the item C, which is release of the executive session minutes. Um, can I have a motion to release all closed session minutes from board meetings held between January twenty twenty and December twenty twenty? The list of executive session minutes is February fourth twenty twenty, February eighteenth twenty twenty, June ninth twenty twenty, June twenty-third twenty twenty. July twenty-first twenty twenty, October twentieth twenty twenty, November tenth twenty twenty and November seventeenth twenty twenty. May I have a motion to release those, please?
So moved.
Second.
Lozada.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Armenta, Hale.
Yes.
Hauptman.
Yes.
Kwan, yes, Sullivan.
Yeah.
Okay, um, moving on to item D, which is the review of the calendar, Bob, now I didn't know if you wanted to walk us through that.
Sure. So it's on um your attachments tonight for um review. And it is pretty much aligned with both District uh one twenty as well as District one twenty-five, both of our high school. Um, feeding high schools calendars as far as winter break and spring break. Um, the spring break is usually what the county does, so um if you look at um August. Real similar to what we've done in the past, um, with the exception of this past school year. Um, you know, starting week, starting school with two institute days and then the first day of school for students would be the eighteenth. Um, we're continuing each month with um late start um on the first Monday of each month. We have our two holidays um in September and October, Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, we have um our institute days. Um, or I should say our, our early release days that we have um half day institutes in the afternoon um, um, October twenty eighth. Excuse me, October twenty ninth, as well um as parent teacher conferences on um November twenty second. And our winter break, we just take through, um, we'll start on Monday the twentieth and on July thirty-first with students returning on um. Monday, January third, which like again, I said, is the same as both high schools. February, March, pretty typical as far as the holidays, institute days, our spring break would be Monday, March twelfth through Friday, March twenty-fifth. We would continue in April with um having Good Friday and then the Monday after Easter off as we've done this year, which is the fifteenth and eighteenth. Um, and then we would end school on. And then we would end school on Friday, the 27th, which is the Friday before um Memorial Day weekend. Again, real similar to what both high schools are doing. I believe that you know, that was the week final. So um. Lisa and I did a comparison of both calendars as well as ours. So that is your third attachment um in the review for your packet. So if you wanted to just kind of look at calendars side by side um and as well as any community members, you know, who have, you know, siblings or other children in the high schools to see how well they compare. So we're asking for you to review tonight. Um, please ask us any questions. Um, and then we're going to uh ask for your approval or taking action at the um March 2nd meeting. Any questions or comments?
Okay, uh it doesn't look like we have any questions or comments. So we will move on to item E of the business agenda, um which is approving the 2021 Life Safety Project for the summer. Eric, I don't know if you wanted to kind of walk us through those recommendations before we uh vote?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and again, I apologize. This is the first time you're seeing this officially, these numbers is because we, we went out to bid at the end of January. And based on the timeline, it's very similar to the construction projects you've already approved. They they need to flip these contracts pretty quickly. So they asked me to submit it for action tonight. So we've worked with Wold Architect on evaluating our five-year facility plan and merging some of those needs with what our potential life safety components uh we might qualify for. So life safety process is one that an architect needs to sign off on, needs to get approval to the only state put a bed. And uh, once they sign off on that, we've got a certain amount of timeframe to uh to complete those projects as funds allow. So all these projects are categorized as the category A, that's the most immediate urgent needs. And uh, it's really just based off the age of this infrastructure that we have. These are, most of these are original classroom unit events and they were out of date 15 years ago, 10 years ago. So we've been able to to keep them running with just a lot of uh love and care from our maintenance team. But they are very antiquated and can use upgrading. So the uh, this works out perfectly that we have about $550,000 of life safety funds sitting in our fund balance that we have nothing to spend it on besides, you know, these projects. And then uh, we've also, you know, heard there's a secondary, a second round of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief grant. So the district received a little over $200,000 the first go around. That was the beginning of the school year. There's, it was announced some estimated numbers that we may see upwards of uh $800,000 in that second round of stimulus money. So uh, it's a substantial amount of money for a district like ours. And one of the main things they recommend is spending on infrastructure improvements. So a lot of districts have done that already with some other reserves they might have. We did, we've already thankfully upgraded a lot of our equipment the last few referendum uh summer projects. So this would work out fantastic uh with our mix of life safety funds than any access would be towards that grant. So the proposal, we, I had asked her to break it out into at least four, uh three different alternates. There was a base. They spread it out into three different sections of Diamond Lake. So they have the old South Town, the New Wing, and then the Middle Corridor. So the uh, the base was the oldest South Town. So that was all included in there. And then we were able to accept up to uh three of the alternates based on the bids came in. So you could see in the memo, it lists the budget versus actual in terms of what uh the bid that was potentially going to be awarded after our uh January 21st bid opening. It's about $250,000 less than what we were budgeting. So fantastic time to go out to bid. A lot of contractors are looking for projects and since it was so under budget, the third uh alternate there is replacing the West Oak Chiller Plant for just uh under $170,000. That's something we've been hoping to do for a long time. And uh, based on this next round of uh emergency relief money, we were able to potentially do that. So the way I'd like to scope it, this as is uh pending the release of these funds, we'd like to accept all these alternates uh as presented. And uh, the Wold Architect would, they planned it, bid it, they would project manage it and they'd do it in collaboration with Pepper the Summer. So is there any specific, oh, and I guess I just wanted to mention itself that the reason this project is going to be so important, especially with the the uh heating ventilation and uh, you know, the transparent, uh, the, the way the air is distributed through classrooms. Our current unit events don't have any, it's not tied to our building automation system at all. So it's not able to circulate air as frequently as we'd like. There's a lot of manual processes that the maintenance department needs to utilize. So this would tie it into our building automation. We can constantly circulate outside air into the classrooms. And it would give us a much more uh efficient unit. So it it really is going to amend perfectly with our health and life safety plan that we're putting together, that we've put together. And uh, you know, it really helped improve the indoor air quality of those different classrooms. But the only question about the project itself, I'll be happy to go over a little bit uh, you know, in more detail.
Eric, if you can just expand on that idea because it caught my attention and since you mentioned it, uh I then uh unit ventilators and air purification, talk a little bit more about whether this project is completely separate and does not offer any additional air uh purification for that, you know, in that sense.
Yeah, the A, this, these units, aside just being more, you know, much more efficient. Uh, it does come with a different level of uh filtration capability that we're able to do. It, it, that's really um you know, just replacing the individual filters in the unit, it allows us to put a much more efficient filter in with a higher MERV rating. That'll help the indoor air quality and the uh, the different particulates that it's able to uh, you know, to filter out. The biggest key for air quality is with our building automation system and the ability to tie that in. So right now, if our maintenance department wants to cycle in outside air, it's manually operating the um the dampers on the machine or manually adjusting temperatures and set points. And it, it's a process that you have to do in the morning and then maybe make some adjustments at night and you're going through each of these classrooms. So now you're able to put in a schedule like we have at West Oak where um, you know, every hour on the hour, you're cycling it out the, all the classroom air. And uh, in conjunction with the higher filters that we're able to use, uh, you know, really dramatically improves the indoor air quality there. So I hope I answered that. The, the building automation system is going to be the biggest key to this project.
Yeah, uh, you know, in the, in the age of COVID, you know, we are always looking for ways to improve, especially in the classroom and provide more, um, you know, a safer environment. So a, any of these projects, I say, like you said, I say interconnect and integrate and make the entire end-to-end, um, you know, life um process better. Uh, it, it's critical. So thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. And and the amount of people that have kind of came and solicited, uh, amount of mechanical contractors solicited districts based on the newest funding recommendation, they're all waving the sheet around that says, hey, you need to, you'd spend this on mechanical projects. It really comes at kind of a perfect time that we're able to, you know, really upgrade this. And that, that's going to be all of our mechanical systems in the entire district. If we're able to do this project, we've done everything in the last three years. So beyond new roofs, new mechanicals, we're going to be good to go for the next 20, 30 years.
Thanks.
Eric, what's the timeframe um for these projects to be completed?
Great question. Um, the, the plan is working with Pepper on the classroom renovation. So there's the existing flooring, painting, lighting demo, all that has to take place this summer. This project would come in first, we demo all the units, they'd come in at Diamond Lake and do all the abatement that needs to take place in, in some of the classrooms. And we're able to put the flooring back in, put in the new unit events. So it's all going to be take place from June to through August. So they know they have a completion um before the end of July. So they have time to test and balance before students return. That's about a two-month project.
Great.
Eric, did you say both campuses or Diamond Lake only?
Yeah, I keep focusing on Diamond Lake because that's the focus of the project. The chiller itself, that's a much more easy project, much easier project just because we're taking out the whole like 20-ton chiller plant, plugging another one in. But it's a, that's going to be a much quicker project. They'll, that'll take place, you know, June and July as well.
Okay.
Hey, if no one has any other questions, then some.
Question. So I know um Mr. Preble is going to do a presentation about the summer school um uh options or whatever. Um, is that, will this um project impact the summer school potential options?
It has definitely impacted our, our flexibility at least. Uh, the fact is we're able to get everything done in the summer. We don't want to make summer school any sort of afterthought whatsoever. So we have allocated space at West Oak Campus. So we've, we've redone the classrooms and uh nine classrooms north of the library at West Oak. So what we've worked with our, with Pepper on is they would split the library in half and then it's some isolated entry and exit points. So none of the construction would impact any in-person summer school we'd like to do. So we are working with a lot of other uh outside, you know, groups and just seeing what kind of, you know, space in the, in the event that we do need to expand. But I think we're pretty well situated to have a robust summer school program, um, you know, based on the space we do have available still.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, then we will um go ahead and take action on this item. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education approves the recommendation for mold architects to pursue pursue life safety work commencing in the summer of 2021 as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Lozada.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Armenta Hale.
Yes.
Hauptmann.
Yes.
Candela.
Yes.
Juan, yes.
Okay, um, and that concludes our business agenda this evening. So now we will move on to board discussion and I think we have an update from you, Mr. Preble.
Yes, good evening and thank you, Mrs. Sullivan and Mr. Roger for that excellent segue into this discussion. But uh, as you see in your board book packet, there is a uh memo on what summer school could look like this uh, this year. And I, it's just basically an update at this point of where we're at. What I would like to be doing is uh sending out a survey to staff outlining some various ways we could um program our summer learning uh this year. And then within those programs or that design, what the calendar could look like. So I'll just walk you very briefly through the bullet points of this. There are several different models that we're looking at. And obviously, space is at a premium this year. I am working with the high school and seat all for potentially other spaces, but I will say none of those spaces are guaranteed. And part of that becomes with whatever they're doing this summer and social distancing requirements and all that. It just reduces capacity everywhere. So I'll just trying to deal in some absolutes, which is what we're working with on our own campus. So based on that, um, I've come up with about five different models in four different timeframes to produce any one of those models. So basically, we're looking at in-person special education E S Y, that's our extended school year in a traditional format, which is at four days a week for six weeks. Well, I'll get to the, excuse me, I'll get to the timelines later. But four days a week for in-person E S Y is one model. Then we're looking at also an in-person E S Y model that's also hybrid, similar to what we were almost started today. But we'll wait till Thursday to start with kind of an A B format. Uh, in-person gen ed summer learning program, four days a week. Another model would be the in-person gen ed hybrid. And then a fifth model would also be um trying to include an online academy for enrichment. So again, I'd like to put a survey out to staff to see who would be available to teach any of those models and see what I capture back, see who's available for what. And then after we narrow that down, based on what those models could be, take a look at also what the timeline for um implementing those models are. So just to recap what our traditional uh learning model looks like in the summertime, we usually go six weeks, four days a week from 8:00 to 11:30 a.m. Now, knowing that that's going to be difficult to get all the kids that we would like to have in person into that timeframe, we could also look at splitting the days. We could still go six weeks, four days a week, but maybe have an 8:00 to 11:30 session and then a 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. session. Uh, we need to look at some transportation uh costs on doing something like that. Again, all this hinges on, uh, will we have staff available to do this and are families interested in doing this? Split sessions, we could do a session one, which is four weeks, which would be something along lines of starting on June 14th, running through, I think it's that Thursday is July 8th. And then because um 4th of July is on a Sunday, we would not take a week off like we have in the past when it falls during a weekday. So we'd be able to go straight through to the 8th. And then the second session would be uh July 12th through, I believe it's August 5th is that Thursday. That allows us to get more kids in. Um, now do we do a combination of the split sessions with the split times? The 8:00 to 11:30 and the 12:30 to 3:00 p.m.? These are all options we can look at. And again, utilizing a hybrid schedule with any of those above uh forementioned uh options. So basically, what I'd like to do is, is put this into a survey, get it out to staff uh and in their future. So we can find out who is available this summer to teach any of these things, design programs and narrow them down to what it could look like. And then send it out to families and say, what would you like to see out of, you know, here, here are the two or three things we know we can do. What do you as families of our district want to see? And then take that information and kind of finalize our summer, our summer school program from there. With that, I will open to any and all questions.
Thank you for that. Um, a couple of questions for you. Uh, so what grades would uh the summer schooling program be offered to?
This would be our traditional uh, our whole, our whole range. So we would go from our EC kiddos all the way up to our, our seventh grader. So we consider, you know, our summer learning program always an extension on the year that they just finished up. So our eighth graders graduated their on to whatever high school programming that Mundaline and Stevenson and you know, Carmel for the few kids that we have for, might be offering for them. So we are always the EC through seventh grade.
Okay, and you touched on my other question, which is what would be the intent of the summer school um program? Would it be remediation? Would it be traditional? You're going to be learning something new. Talk about that, please.
The first, the first order of business that we've kind of agreed on um is that we want to, we want to tackle our kiddos and E S Y and our kiddos with I E Ps first. And then remedial learning or remedial learning, remedial literacy uh going from there. Now, that being said, traditionally and traditionally, we have to go back a couple of years because last summer was anything but. We, we have had enrichment courses, we've had Spanish courses, we've had some discovery programs. We would love to be able to offer that. It just depends on what our capacity looks like. So if that is all rolled into um this quest for information from staff and then uh eventually families.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
All right.
So you, you'll be sending out the survey uh the next couple of weeks or what's the deadline?
We're ready to go on out this week. Uh, that's my intention. Um, and then so then at the bottom of this, I kind of gave some tentative uh time. Once we have um the staff information back, we'll put together what we're able to provide, we'll send out to families. And I would like to have um that all taken care of so that, you know, by, you know, the week of March 8th, we're, we're knowing exactly what the program's going to look like.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Does anyone have any other questions? Nope. Okay, and then we will move on to Freedom of Information requests. And we had three. It looks like they were all fulfilled. Could I just ask that the original request be included in the packet too? I think it used to be in the past, but I'm only seeing our responses.
Sure.
Thank you. I think that just gives us clarification as to like what they were asking because sometimes we can't always make that out. Um, okay, moving on to notices and communications.
So there is just um one piece of um, in, in addition to the uh, the usual board meeting calendar. As the board and community know, we've been working closely. As the board and community know, we've been working closely with our union and its leadership team on a safe return to school and a safe return to work for our staff. We've been working with them since June of last year on a monthly basis and also with members of the Board of Education. And we've come to, you know, two very collaborative agreements. And so Dr. Barang and I put this letter together just to kind of share that, you know, throughout this process, that it was a very collaborative partnership and that we look forward to continuing to work together and building upon the relationships that we've established throughout the years and also more so throughout the process. So I know Dr. Barang was attending the meeting as a participant. And I don't know if she's still around, but we just wanted to let the board know, let the community know that our relationships throughout this whole process have continued and maintained its strength and will continue to do so as we move forward. And then I'll also be sharing this with the staff later this week.
Great. I think that's really nice to see, especially since I think we've all seen kind of a lot of contentious things in the news lately between school districts and unions or parents and school districts. And so it's nice to see that the positive climate and culture that we have in the district has continued on even through kind of the challenges that everyone has faced with COVID. So thank you for that.
And thank you for the board for your involvement in our partnership too. It's, it's helped a lot. Your support. And I think the, not only does the district leadership team feel it and appreciate it, I know the union and the staff does too.
That's great. That's great. Okay, um, I see also we have the calendar, which we always have. And then there's also the in-person learning back to school videos. Which I don't know if you wanted to say anything about. I watched them. I thought they were great. You know, for parents or for community members really to get a flavor of what does this look like with the kids? You could see exactly how the kids were interacting. It's certainly nice to see them back in school, you know, and able to kind of interact with their teachers and classmates, even though there are limitations. So thank you for putting those together. Are those available on our website?
Yes, it's on the homepage. I have all three playing in a loop with the big, the main video on the homepage.
Cool.
Very well done. Yeah.
I, I wanted to ask, is the video available in Spanish?
Currently it isn't, however, that could be easily updated.
The purpose, sorry, for the purpose of the video is just for the board's benefit was, you know, each of the principals worked together with Mr. Hanson and, and some of their students of what it's going to look like for the kids to come back, but we're absolutely can translate those. I'll work with Daisy to put that together. And so that way they're available for those parents that want to see what it might look like. It's a great idea. And I believe all the kids viewed this last Friday prior to, our hope was obviously today being the first day for in-person learning, but we're going to try again for Thursday.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I agree. I think it would be really important to have those available in Spanish as well. Okay, moving on, we now open the floor up for public comments and petition on non-agenda items. If we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening, could you please go ahead and take those in the chat box and then we will read them into the meeting. And we'll pause for a minute to allow people the opportunity to do that if they so wish. Okay, it does not look like we have any public comments. So then moving on to others, do we have any others this evening? No. Okay, then I would like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan. Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Stay warm. Enjoy the snow. We hope that everything goes smoothly with the kids that are coming back on Thursday and Friday. Yes, I'm sure they're all excited.
Definitely.
Exciting.
Yeah, we look forward to having an update for you at our next meeting of some great positive responses.
Fantastic. Thank you all for all the hard work you guys put into this. Yeah.
Everybody, have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.